Danny.
So, three of the five members are basically members of this group, right?
Well, I'm a non-employee, yeah, and Connie's the only non-employee with John at this group. The council.
Yeah, okay.
Tech.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
Well, we've got to make it so they can explain a little better, show them the agenda, why it's important, what they want to do, and what they do, and to keep us in line.
But I can bring that up. It's certainly, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, say for non-elective officials, that's totally fine. What about employees that are new now and didn't work during that?
We need to pick a day, we need to pick a day.
Yeah, so I mean.
I understand, and then that needs to be discussed.
And then they also need to plug that into budget overall, what it's going to look like, and Connie, Connie has to run our numbers, employees, and part-time employees.
And have many sour words.
Hmm, I don't think you would do that, but I don't know.
You would?
Would you?
And it'd be taxed, right?
It would be, it's compensation.
So, but you do know they get every day, and the police get received a stipend.
I remember, I remember totally.
You do know that, right?
Yeah, but these aren't.
No, I know what you're saying.
And the reason I'm running it, is just, I know an employee who has a hard or, I don't know, that's a different employee, but they're receiving a two thousand dollar bonus.
If it costs us to pay taxes on our everything, it's like a normal pay.
It's about a hundred twelve thousand dollars if you need seventy-five employees, and I'm just guessing, full-time, part-time, somewhere near that fifteen hundred dollars. I mean, we only got one point six million.
And we're spending a hundred twenty thousand dollars on a truck trip. I think our employees are worth a hundred and a half thousand.
Well, I'm not saying that. Don't know, no, doctor. I thought the end of the paper.
Just some high up there, I would support that.
That's fair. Okay. I'll bring it up at our meeting, and then.
When, when will this committee be?
I was Wednesday, I have my calendar.
So, why, if they were paid through that whole period? I'm just curious, why are we wanting to give more for those who worked remotely or however?
Yes, some of them didn't have to come in to work, right?
No, they laid anybody off. Well, some of them worked from home, yeah, remotely, most of the staff worked from home. Trash drive, not. You know, but you gotta look at, is it go down, all the way down to reserves, you know, I mean, police officers, I mean, and if it's going to the fire department, I mean, they could.
Those are volunteers.
They're still on our, on our payroll.
And I don't want any of the taxes.
So, they get that four to seventy-five, you, you, you get up there pretty big. I'm just saying, you got, you draw money.
No, if, if, if it isn't our money, and it isn't your money, it's tax money.
Well, you guys are charged.
But, employees, the reason I saw employees is because, I'm not sure where you draw the line, okay? Obviously, the police department had to work, they were required to work, dispatchers were required to work, um, water severs were required to work, um, street departments were required to work. I mean, that, that, that work couldn't be done.
Everybody's.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I mean, everybody got paid.
Yeah, um, so I'm, I'm not sure exactly where you draw that line, um, that, that's the reason I suggested.
I mean, we had summer help during the, you know, it's.
I'm not talking about summer help.
They're part-time, they're, they're. They were here, I'm just saying.
I'm not talking about going back.
We even current, so, we just gotta look at it, and if there's some, if you get a chance, all the time, we can write, write some guidance, you know, in it. And I'll, I'll take it, that, that's okay.
Okay, okay.
I respect everybody's time, I can just.
Okay, okay.
We could talk about this for hours. I think they want to do that.
At this one, right? That's all, okay. I thought it was, I just didn't. Okay, so as far as, what's on, is there any questions, Larry, as far as?
Are you having any questions here?
No.
So, I, 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 okay, I do have an ordinance, again, this is amended, the original ordinance. So, I need to get a motion, this is the ordinance number ten, excuse me, the order twenty-one, twenty-two dash ten. I need a motion to read the first reading of this order. No, maybe, maybe, by John, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Huh, all right. Order twenty-one, twenty-two dash ten, and ordinance amended, ordinance number eleven seventy-five, regarding the receipt of money from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA twenty-one. Whereas the common counsel of the city of Tennessee, the third day of May, uh, twenty twenty-one, adopted ordinance eleven seventy-five, creating funds for the receipt of money from the Federal American, since the Federal American Rescue Act, ARPA twenty-one. And whereas it attached said ordinance number eleven seventy-five, was a exhibit providing a plan for utilization of monies from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act twenty-one. And whereas, and whereas it is the desire of the common counsel of the city of Tennessee, that the plan for the utilization of these monies from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act twenty-one be modified to, for, to allow for expenditures of set funds for various city projects, technology upgrades, purchase of certain equipment, city departments, upgrades and maintenance, city parks, and otherwise allowable city expenditures, expenses. Now, therefore, be resolved and unnamed, uh, by the common counsel of the city of Tennessee, uh, number one, the plan for utilization of monies in the Federal American Rescue Act, ARPA twenty-one, shall be modified to allow the following classes of expenditures, A, technology upgrades, B, purchase of certain equipment for city departments, C, upgrades and maintenance, city parks, and D, otherwise allowable city expenses. Two, all other, respect that ordinance, that should remain in full court order in fact, newly adopted by the common counsel, uh, tell city Indiana this, this day, of June twenty twenty-two. Um, you had the first reading of ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-two dash ten, uh, I'm going to motion second, third, with by title.
I'm going to make a motion.
Motion made by Gary, selected by Larry, and you can have a discussion. Here now, no votes, in favor, signify by five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading, ordinance eleven twenty-two, gosh, I'm not, I'm not, there's a lot in here, ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash ten, and, uh, ordinance amended, ordinance number eleven seventy-five, regarding the spending of money received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA twenty-one. Third reading, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, and ordinance amended, ordinance, number eleven seventy-five, regarding the spending of money received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA twenty-one. You had the first, second, third reading, uh, there are no other discussions, I'm going to motion to approve.
You can have a motion.
Motion made by Gary, June, okay.
All seconded.
Second by Gary, and one last time, any discussion? All right, here now, we'll call for vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
All right, hang on. If I could ever bring any place here.
Connie, she's in line now.
All right, we're moving down to the CDL part. Find. Okay, okay. Either the, your CDL amendment salary, your order amendment, twenty twenty-two salaries. Counsel, what I'm making the recommendation for us to do is, we have several employees that are going to have a CDL already. They do not receive any additional pay for having their CDLs. They are simply somebody next to them, that's not having a CDL. The city paid for most of all these CDLs in the wastewater. Pat, as he was in the wastewater, so the city did pay for that. Um, I don't think they paid for one that's in the trash department, I think they paid that on their own, or maybe their, their job and path, I'm not sure.
They can't go to wastewater also.
They did, okay, then I guess the city actually did take all these. I'm working with Kevin, and he is the foreman, uh, he's the chairman, having, kind of being charged with this program, wanting to get together, that's going to work to have employees have their CDLs. Or, that's not the ground here, John's going to agree to help with this, he just got his CDL, um, class B, A, and B's, yeah, there you go. Anyway, so, he's going to help Kevin kind of get this started, but in the meantime, we have a number of employees, Chris says is, everybody's wastewater, everybody's wastewater, Chris says is, uh, the street department, you just have Pat, and two to the trash, and you got, and somehow, right? Roger's in that place, and I, he mentioned it, I don't know, Greg, you even have your wastewater, so, you got to have, so, I don't know any of them employees that actually has that in their head. I'd pretty much imagine that, so, there may be one of them, but I am. What I'm proposing is that we, the employees that currently have their CDLs, a dollar increase in their wages, that includes Chris and Pat, their salaries, so, we're going to figure out that a little differently from theirs. Connie's, that's in there, you should have, it's all in your head. Um, as we get this program on the ground, we're going to figure out the cost to get an employee, their CDLs. If for some reason it's a cost that we're going to have to, you know, but, but, it could be two thousand, five thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand, I don't know yet. There's been changes to all that, but once we get that in, um, then how many employees are interested in it?
You're saying it costs, it could cost that much to get that license?
The cost is enough, a lot, since, since, well, everybody's wastewater, I think, I don't know. This is going to be my recommendation, and it's not in the order, so I'm just going to give some background on it. Um, we would cover the costs of the employee, they would have to agree to work for us like a year, and maybe they get back whatever, it's another incentive for employees to better themselves, and better us. It's a liability, we not have to have a CDL driving a vehicle with air brakes, or something like that, that's a risk on us, building that into your payroll. Right now, you know, we, we have two trash trucks, one once a day, and they have to ride around Kentucky.
You know, probably rush, you know.
Some of them have gotten disowned on their own expenses, some of them we have.
No, I believe all of them have gotten owned on their own expenses at this point. Based on, maybe not Roger, he might be the only one that has. But everybody else, basically wastewater has covered the cost, and that's because Roger, and the equipment that they drive, have their air brakes and stuff required.
This doesn't, unless I'm misreading it, this doesn't apply to paying for the training.
No. This is just for the current ones that have it today, the train's coming later, obviously, it's a back-up.
And one is to get it in the future.
In the one that's in the future.
Any employee regarding the department.
Regarding the department, it doesn't matter if it's in police.
Dispatchers.
Anyone get their CDLs, I guess, that's okay.
So, any employee, if it goes against their CDL.
Could we see the dollar more than our?
Or whether it's needed or not.
I, I would think we want to limit that to the department that actually are, and I don't, does, Pat, does, does that, does that work, does that work on that? Is it just, I don't know, like, well, so, yeah, so, they, they probably need it, I, I, I don't like, I don't like you to expand any of this, to any department that does it.
So.
I mean, if they want to switch, go go to another department to do that, and then they need to find a way, you know.
Okay, so.
I, I, I think it should be, you know, job related, or department related, I don't want to not pay anybody.
Well, really, I bet. I know, I know where you're going with it, I know where you're going with it, so, we could word this a little differently, and still probably make this work. Uh, employee, an employee.
Employee.
Any of your good wording, I'm still, she's, what the park markets, what the park markets do you want, is in, obviously, trash. Right? Street.
Basically. Well, this wouldn't go over the electric.
No, you would want water, or park on raft, or anything, well, parks are probably wouldn't need it. Wouldn't water be a bad idea?
Well, they don't need it for anything at the moment, I don't think, but I mean, it would probably hurt if, if maybe one of them wanted it, because you have to roll one last time.
Or one may train from one department to the other.
Sure.
And we've already got it. So, would you put trash, street, sewer, water?
That's just what I'd go with it.
Okay. Any employee in the following departments.
Our department, we work with CDL, our department. Our trust is all of those, they are used servers.
Or.
You know, they're technically servers, and they're technically, and then, and then that is, but since I have, I always take care of them. Yeah, all those, all those are just private.
Okay. See, that's one reason to include the water departments.
It wouldn't hurt if it was water.
Do any employee, do you need necessary to operate, wait, wait, for our CDLs? You know, that, that's, that's all, with that, it's just.
Any employee.
Do you need to ask this?
You need to certainly operate with it. For our CDLs.
Yeah, and I, I know, some of you guys have remaining drivers, so, for that person, that's something.
I can't drive at all. Well, even, it's, it's, it's not for us, they're, they're, you know, still, although, you know.
So, any employee needing necessary to operate equipment, who, on this date, da-da-da-da-da, does that work? You need, it's based on certain employee, putting it right between employee, into the very first line.
Okay. Can I suggest that maybe like which point we add up and under our acting meaning, rather than try to, did it, there are reasons for my pressures.
We'd like to get it in, in, we've got that some employees are literally. I don't want to take, take risks as an employee.
Correct. It's about like a, I'm not going to be any driver.
Where's that? Oh, yeah.
You guys down there, you guys got to get your.
I didn't like that. See, you don't like that.
We think that.
Wes, Wes, he's working hard.
But they, they, they. Okay, yeah, because the city come up with all of this. So that's, that's. But that, that's what we're doing. The city pays you.
So we're on the same page.
And we're also sending the.
Drop, drop. Any employee deemed necessary to operate equipment who, on this date. Is that what you want to do? Any employee in the, you want to listen to so, so far apart?
I was deemed necessary.
Okay, okay. No, no, we'll let it go. Department head heads. Deemed necessary by the department head. Okay, I like that. So any employee deemed necessary by the department head to operate equipment who is da, 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 da. That work? And I took diapers. I do, I swear. I can see how it happened. Wes, Tony, she's worked for really hard, hard to get that day, she's with her purpose, so. So, uh, this is ordinance two dash twenty twenty two. Uh, and there are no other special anti-emotion, she'll allow me the first reading of this ordinance. Motion made by Larry, your second. Second by Philip, all in his favor, second by the state's eye.
Aye.
Pose. All right. Ordinance two dash twenty twenty two, amendment to the twenty twenty two dollar ordinance adopted by the city council of October eleven twenty twenty one. An employee deemed necessary by the department head to operate equipment who, on this date, holds a valid driver, commercial driver's license, C D L. And has provided all the paperwork the city tells city clerk treasurer. Uh, will receive a dollar increase in their per hour wage starting June twelve twenty twenty two. It is employee's responsibility to keep all the C D L information up to date with the clerk treasurer. Employee after this date who obtained their commercial driver's license, C D L, will provide all paperwork the city tells city clerk treasurer and. Or excuse me, will receive a dollar increase in their per hour wage starting with the next payroll cycle. It is employee's responsibility to keep all C D L information up to date with the clerk treasurer. Any salary employee who has a commercial driver's license or obtained one or will also receive a dollar increase in the pay figure on the current hourly rate. It is employee's responsibility to keep all C D L information up to date with the clerk treasurer. Adopted by the common council, uh, city of the city the sixth day of June twenty twenty two, Mayor here to go, Connie, uh, a churcher, Connie and Burger. Council that you type first reading ordinance two dash twenty twenty two, I intend motion to spin a real second through by title.
A motion.
Motion made by Julie, your second.
Second.
Second by Gary, all in his favor, signature by the state's eye.
Aye.
Pose. Ordinance two dash twenty twenty two, amendment to the twenty twenty two dollar ordinance adopted by the city council on October eleven twenty twenty one. Third reading, ordinance two dash twenty twenty two, amendment to the twenty twenty two dollar ordinance adopted by the city council on October eleven twenty twenty one. You had the first, second, third reading, uh, ordinance number two dash twenty twenty two. If there are no other questions, I intend motion to approve. Motion made by John, second by Julie. Uh, any further discussion? You're not going to call for vote, all in his favor, signature by the state's eye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. All right. We're good. This might be more record. All right, utility, receive tax, water, it's also supposed to have a left in there, there's a big, big chili. At our special council meeting, we have June twenty. Same night as our, where it works, where it works, and we'll have a council meeting after that. If you're familiar with that, you see tax being erased, going away, or whatever you call it. Um, we're going to have a presentation to, uh, approve about that, that. So, tell us, let's expect that, do you have the report on the water, our heart? So, once that's done, uh, I'll get that to you guys, any question regarding it. On the water side, it's going to say like a quarter, maybe fifty cent, almost. And I can say about a quarter, a hundred, a hundred. A lot, but it's going to say a non, not per gallon, but for a whole bill. Think like, like your side about on. We're going to get them.